Let's move on to the Urbana City Council meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
President.
Mr. Garrick. Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing? Here. The first item is approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move that they be approved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Stevenson. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Additions to the agenda. All right, let's move on to petitions and communications, and I would like to welcome a boy scout, John Seabower, who's here, part of his citizenship in the community, to get the badge, so welcome. You should have come last week, it was more exciting.
(laughter)
Yeah, right. Okay, are there any, is there anyone who would like to address the city council? Okay, any other communications from council members?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Well, let me just thank Phyllis Clark, city clerk, and the mayor for hosting and supporting the Come Alive 2 concert that we had at the Levis Center this weekend on Saturday. We had a good turnout, we got some very good feedback from the public, they enjoyed it. Candy Foster and Shade of Blues performed as musical group, and Ron Bridgewater and his group, plus CU Superstar and Ted, is it Atkinson, am I getting that correct, who did the Fourteenth Colony narrative on the history of the black community? And we did have displays, art displays, and a display from Doris B. Hoskins' collection, which Ron exhibited. It turned out to be a wonderful thing, and the food was excellent, so I just want to say that I think it was something that we can be proud of, and we might do it again next year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, old business. I don't think we have any old business. How about reports of standing committees? Brandon Bowersox?
Yeah, last Monday, the ninth, the committee of the whole met and sent six items here to council, all with a recommendation for approval. So first, on behalf of the committee, I move approval of ordinance 2009-11117. This is the annual tax levy ordinance for the year beginning July 109 and ending June 30th of 2010.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Bowersox, seconded by Roberts. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Bowersox?
Next, a related ordinance. For the committee, I move approval of ordinance 2009-11118. This is an ordinance abating the tax levy for $965,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2005.
Okay, motion by Bowersox, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. Mr. Bowersox?
And then finally, the third of this set of three. For the committee, I move approval of a resolution, number 2009-1135R. This is a resolution directing the county clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate purpose for the year beginning July 109 and ending June 30, 2010.
Motion by Bowersox, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries. Mr. Bowersox?
Next, for the committee, I move approval of ordinance 2009-11119. This is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for 1913 Brownfield Road.
Second. Okay, motion by Bowersox, seconded by Lewis. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next, for the committee, I move approval of ordinance 2009-11120. This is an ordinance amending Section 11-49 of the Urbana City Code regarding nuisance abatement liens.
Second. Okay, motion by Bowersox, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yeah.
That motion carries.
Finally, for the committee, I move approval of ordinance 2009-11121, an ordinance amending Section 118 of the Urbana City Code regarding the minimum fine schedule for certain violations. I'll note, there was a version in our packet that, upon my inspection, had all the changes that we had made in committee last week.
Second.
Motion by Bowersox, seconded by Lewis. Any further discussion?
I'll just say, one thing.
Yes.
I just thought that it was appropriate that we made some of the changes that we did last week to accommodate certain conditions when the fine structure, I think, is more equitable that way, so I appreciate that.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. I don't believe we have any reports of special committees, reports of officers? No reports of officers? Okay, we have new business. First is a presentation on rain gardens. I think our city arborist is coming, Bill Gray, you want to introduce this?
I would. I'd like to introduce our city arborist, Michael Brunk, and our landscape supervisor, Ray Knight. They completed a project this year that they would like to share with you, and they have a little PowerPoint to supplement what they have to tell you.
This is a little project that I feel Ray deserves some recognition on. He went the extra effort to acquire grant funding for the project, and so I'm going to turn the show over to Ray.
Yes.
Rain garden is a vegetated shallow depression designed to trap runoff from rainfall and snow melt. Can be installed where they receive water from parking lots or roads. Benefits of the rain gardens help to store, preserve natural hydrology, remove pollutants, and attract wildlife. We had, excuse me, identified a problem area at 704 Address on Glover, where we had standing water. It would also overflow into the storm drain that you see directly in the center, and then off to the left. I can't very well see that one, but there's one there. We got a design from, I believe it was from Department of Natural Resources in Wisconsin, our engineering department found that. We adjusted the size of it, stayed with the plant material listing, and upped the numbers a little bit to adjust for the size. We stuck with the plan that they had was to dig a three, three and a half to four-foot deep area, and then backfill that. So that's what it looks like after we had removed all the native soil in that area. And then you can also see where we removed the sod. That basically creates an overflow for that area. If it would fill up, it could still overflow to that drain. We're hoping that that doesn't happen too often, and we created it in a kind of a S shape to look like a stream, more natural. There's a photo where we're filling it in with compost and sand. It's a 50/50 mix of our garden compost from the landscape recycling center. And there it is after it was graded and planted. We mulch it with river gravel. And there it is, completed. And another one. And this would be our first large rainfall after it was done. This was a, I believe, about a two-inch rain after we'd had two or three days of rain, I think it was. So you can see where the water is standing in that area. And there it is, at the end where the drain is, or before the drain, I should say, you see that most of that water is being held in that area and allowed to filter through. The lady that had taken this picture said the water was gone within a day or so. Where in the past, the water that did stand in this area would sometimes set for four or five days, and what didn't overflow. So it is draining and doing what we want it to do. So it's a nice little educational piece that we created for a couple of reasons, actually. This is the second rain garden that the Arbor Division has worked on. The first one was with the U of I. I don't know if you remember the rain garden that they built over by McKinley Health Center. We helped them build that so we could learn how it was done, how they did it. And we wanted to do our own little rain garden, and there was a real appropriate space right next to us that flooded all the time, that is now something we can watch and learn how the plants will absorb that moisture, keep it from going into storm drains, and now we've got a little demo that we can show the residents if they want to see a small rain garden that's the size that could be utilized in somebody's yard. And Ray really took this on and made it happen, and I appreciate his effort on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis?
I guess I'd like to maybe learn just a little bit about the rain gardens. Is the water standing there because we have like a clay soil, and it's just not absorbing into the earth very fast?
We thought that was the case there, but once we started excavating it, it really wasn't too bad. I think it was just a drainage issue from, you know, the neighboring properties.
And the elevations?
And the elevation change, yeah.
And a large roof at 704, the runoff from that roof goes right into that area. So that area was taking on a lot of water, and it was basically sitting there and then running off into the storm drain. We had the impervious parking lot there at 704, and then we had the roof, and then we had the trailer court, and it was all kind of coming into that area.
And how deep do you dig down into the earth to create the field which you're going to use, fill up again with 50% mulch and 50% sand?
It was three and a half to four feet.
And is that, with that normally in most people's backyards, would that go below the clay level of our subsoil, or is it, maybe it depends on your yard?
Yeah, it's going to depend on your location.
It's really becoming like a catch basin, is that correct?
Yes.
That you didn't fill up with?
A lot of times in backyards, six to 12 inches is sufficient.
Is sufficient?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Very interesting.
Diane?
Well, I think it's great that we have a demonstration rain garden on city property, so that's terrific. And I have a constituent on Sunny Crest Court East who is a landscape architect, member of the faculty, and he's installed a beautiful rain garden. You, I don't know if you've seen it or not.
I have.
But I stopped by there the other day, and I would love to see more of these in residential neighborhoods. And how can we work with residents to, if they want to put in a rain garden, what resources are there?
Well, that's a very good question. I just happened to bring a publication that our engineering department, Brad Bennett, helped put together with the City of Champaign and Savoy and a number of others, that is Rain Gardens for Illinois, and it kind of just walks you through the simple procedures of how to build a rain garden. So these are available at the City of Urbana Public Works Department, most likely the City of Champaign and the Village of Savoy. I have some in the back tonight for people, and I have probably enough to hand out to all of you as well. I didn't think of it, I ought to put them in the packets. So that's one resource. People that are interested to read up on this, it's a very simple process, it really doesn't have to be very involved at all. And I think it's just a matter of starting the process, showing people how to do it, and just kind of keeping that in the forefront through presentations like this.
Bill Gray?
Just to add to those comments, also, the rain gardens in Illinois is on our website. Public Works and the Engineering Division, there's a whole litany of good information about stormwater management on our website, including that brochure, so that's where it's available, too. We also plan to do a similar type of rain garden by Oswale at the southeast corner of Broadway in Illinois when we rebuild that parking lot next spring. So that's going to augment Lot 24, which supplements parking for Lincoln Square Village and for Saturday's Market. So you'll see some of these same techniques being used there. On the private sector side, a project that's underway now, nearing completion, Carl, in expanding the parking lot immediately east of the north deck, so this would be McCullough, north of University Avenue. That will be also kind of what I would call a rain garden area. It's going to capture a lot of the runoff from the parking lot there. Lastly, to tie into what we talked to last week with the Normal, Illinois, presentation, that is, is that with appropriate resources, I think we can expand rain gardens and private property and implement them more in more city-type projects if we had the funding aspect to augment that, like in Normal and the Quad Cities areas. I know the Quad Cities supplements, I think, up to $500 in material costs for private properties, rain gardens, by Oswales. So there are programs out there that are available, but, you know, having the resources helps. But this is definitely the way, you know, really, the US is going, especially to try to help address stormwater quality issues and even quantity issues in this case, the quantity aspect, too, because it's absorbing and keeping it more on-site rather than discharging it downstream into our storm sewers that might aggravate flooding somewhere else. So this project does the quantity and the quality.
Well, I know this resident actually contacted Public Works about a little curb cut, which I'm sure maybe raised some alarm among me, but to actually not only capture the water coming off his roof, but the water in the street. So I think we should consider in the future, especially in new subdivisions, how we can actually build an infrastructure to facilitate the creation of rain gardens and other projects like this.
Yeah, that'd be desirable.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Dennis Roberts wants to talk about a couple of items. First is second-floor relocation initiative. Do you want to do it just from your desk?
All right. My interest in talking about or suggesting this initiative comes from a meeting that was held in Urbana. Can't remember now if it was early this month, I guess it was. It was part of the series of lectures that are provided by the university at the School of Urban Planning and Design. And this fall, they invited urban planner Dan Carmodi to come to the community and give some lectures. And I was not able to attend his afternoon lecture, but I heard it was very exciting, and I also heard that there was going to be an informal meeting in the evening, starting at the new Picasso's Restaurant in downtown Urbana, and that Dan would basically kind of have a walking lecture workshop with those people who were interested to walk through the downtown of Urbana and talk about the buildings in the community and what he saw as visiting professional, as things that we could work on and, you know, things that were strong points, and also things that needed attention for the city of Urbana as far as vital downtown. Mr. Carmodi is well-known, he's an interesting guy. He's a pub owner, he owns a brewery, and he's currently working as the director of the Eastern Market in Detroit, Michigan. This is one of the biggest and one of the oldest outside markets in the United States. He took the group through a couple of, through the city. We ended up at the outside tables at the R and Post Restaurant, and he kind of had like a mini charrette process happening at that time. He worked with groups of five or six people to talk about things that they liked to see, ideas. It was like a kind of a free-flowing thing. And one of the things that came out, and he seemed to be very supportive of, was to open up more and more retail space and to really focus on the two blocks of the downtown that have, that contain our retail stores. And one of the things he said that we should look at was to see if we can relocate businesses which are non-retail but still offer important services to the community to second and third floor locations, which are still very accessible to the people who need them, and open up downtown ground-floor level space in the buildings to devote to more retail. And that would make the downtown more vibrant and alive and offer more shopping experiences for those of us who are downtown. So it seemed like a very obvious and, you know, we were thinking, well, why didn't we think of this, or what could we do to initiate this? And I looked at two programs that we already had in our community. The city offers two really excellent initiatives already for the downtown, and on one of the pages I gave you, a back and a front printout of the City of Urbana's Economic Development Division program. One is, covers the Art Gallery Incentive Program, and most recently, we have initiated a new business incentive program. And these programs are virtually identical. They have to do with the buildings that are located within the downtown, the TIP, one or two boundaries. And what they provide for people who are trying to initiate new businesses downtown is a certain kind of a percent of rent subsidy for the amount of money that they pay on their lease or their rent per month to the building owner. And it stipulates how many months this is possible to renew. It talks about the terms of the lease and what the new business has to agree to to initiate this and to receive this fee or this waiver. It talks about the period that they have to be in business to, they have to commit to a two-year period, and other details which make these fees and reductions and opportunities available to initiate business starts in Urbana. So what I've, what I'm suggesting is basically using the same template and creating a second-floor relocation incentive program. And what I did was I took the existing wording for, I think it was the Business Incentive Program, and in the copies that I gave out to the city council members, I merely inserted and read wording which would relate to this new incentive called the Second Floor Relocation Incentive Program. Virtually, it's identical in most respects to the programs that we already have existing, with the addition of offering a bullet point on remodeling, remodeling building permit fee waiver. In other words, if a person was going to relocate to a second floor, he may have to reconfigure some of his offices, and if he were to take out a building, need a building permit, maybe the fee could be waived. Now, these are merely my suggestions, and of course, this is going to be up for discussion in the city council. Also, that we would assist in moving the individual, and I think perhaps I forgot to put that in here. No, I did. It's, besides the rent, I said, in addition to the monthly rent subsidy, the applicant may apply for a $1,000 office moving grant to be paid to the business owner upon relocating. This money may be used to offset costs related to furniture and office equipment moving expenses. In other words, we would help the guy who hires the moving company to move his offices and equipment upstairs. I think, you know, this would be an incentive to help him make that decision. So this program, if we initiated it, would not require any office to move, but if they chose to do so, it would give them, well, it might encourage them to do so, and if they chose to do so, they would get some help in doing it, because it's important to the city to have more retail space available to its customers. So this is what I'd like to present for the discussion. I think that it would be a helpful and thoughtful addition to our program, and we do know that there's one property owner in the downtown that's already taken advantage of this, and that would be Mr. Strong, who owns the Nolton and Bennett Building on the corner of Race and Main Street. And there we've had, we've seen that a law office has relocated, and instead, we now have a clothing store opening up, a very nice women's clothing store opening up in that location. So that was a very advantageous change of clientele on the first floor, and I think that's exactly the kind of stimulus and activity that I like to see happen there. So I'm just offering these, this program for your consideration tonight.
Brandon?
Yeah, thanks, Dennis, for this idea. I think the more that we can encourage opening up ground-floor retail spaces for actual retail business, that is a huge benefit for downtown, and the costs that the city would be outlaying here in a monthly rent subsidy for up to 12 months and for some relocating expenses, I think are well worth the benefit that we get. So I generally am supportive of this concept. I would want to ask city staff, and I don't know, maybe Libby Tyler, you might be the right person to help answer this a little, whether, obviously, the details of, you know, writing up the program description or administering this ultimately would fall onto city staff. I wonder whether you feel like it's something that would get used a fair number of times, or that is the kind of incentive that if you offered it to business owners, they would take us up on? Because I would want to make sure that it is something you all think would work and would help you do your job. And if you've all discussed this concept and different ideas for how to make it the most beneficial or the most convincing, you know, the tool you need to help you walk in the door and convince a few more business owners to do that, that would be great.
We have been studying it a little bit. We don't have the markup. We do think conceptually, it sounds like a good program, similar to some of the other programs, and something that we can certainly administer, or we could even possibly utilize the same budget allocations, and then if we run out of the budget, seek for reallocation. We think there may be a few opportunities, not a lot. We don't have a very large downtown in this area, and most are occupied, but it is an incentive that could be utilized. I think one thing we'd want to look at is moving expenses, if those would be eligible expenses. Want to do a little research on that, and Tom and Ryan have done some research already. I don't know if you wanted to share that?
Sure. Well, first, I'd like to say, as an economic developer, we want as many tools in our economic development toolbox as possible, so we're very supportive of any program that would help increase activity in downtown. One type of analysis that we've done is we've looked at owner-occupied spaces in downtown, and the reason we did that is this program may not be as, may not be as much benefit to owner-occupied space as it is to leased or rented space. The building that the Parkinson &amp; Burns moved out of and the wooden hanger moved into was owned by an owner that did not occupy the space. We were able to work with the law office to relocate and get a retail business, and that's ideal, we'd love to do that. However, if the space is owner-occupied, it's less likely to relocate to another building because obviously they own the because obviously, they own the building and they're very comfortable in their space. What it may do is open up an opportunity, if there's, say, second-floor space available, the owner can relocate their offices to the second floor and then open up their first-floor space to rent to a retail user. But the fact that most of our, most of our professional offices, first-floor space on Main Street is owner-occupied, the program may not see a lot of activity at first, but we'll definitely include it in our marketing materials, we'll make it available, and we'll work with people to use the space. But I do want you to realize that there may not be a huge run initially on this program, but we'll certainly market it and try to encourage that.
How much are we talking about? Because it seems like most of the spaces are retail now. Are we talking about between Broadway and, and that one block past Race Street?
Sure.
Because I can only think of one law office that's at the corner, and I don't know, it seems like we do have mostly retail already.
We do, we have more retail in downtown Urbana than we've had in many years, and that's great. But we do, we do have some owner-occupied office space, not just law offices, but IGW Architectural Firm, they own their space, Phoebus and Kester, they own their space. So there are some professional offices that are owner-occupied.
And Libby, did you have something?
Well, we, we also looked at how many upper-floor spaces were vacant, we did a, we tried to look at that, and I think Tom might have numbers on that. Just another comment that, you know, we think the increased retail activity on Main Street's fantastic, and that's a trend we'd like to encourage from an economic standpoint, though we also value our office sector of the economy downtown, that distinguishes us from Champaign and helps to add to the stability of our base. So I like the idea that this is an incentive, it provides some carrots, some incentives, but also values our office tenants and base as well. So I know we looked at what kind of upper-floor opportunities there might be.
Correct. There is actually not a lot of second-floor space available on Main Street. As far as square footage, if you go to the County Plaza Building, the White Building, there's a considerable amount of square footage available there, that would be upper-floor space, so would be eligible under this program. But along Main Street, between Race and Broadway, there's actually not a lot of second-floor space available. So again, we can market the program and encourage the use of it, and we'll certainly work with anyone that wants to use it. And again, it's, it's a great tool to have in the toolbox.
Brandon?
And okay, my last question, do you know of any other, for the owner-occupied spaces, any other economic development incentive or tool that's more effective for those situations?
We have, we have not only the two programs that were mentioned this evening as rent subsidies, we have what we call our TIF Redevelopment Incentive Program. And so if an owner wants to do improvements to a building, they might use that program that's available to them through the TIF Redevelopment Incentive Program. As far as other potential programs that might benefit owner-occupied spaces, we could certainly take a look and see if there's anything that we're missing, any niche that we're missing that doesn't quite fit into any of the other programs. But I think between the TIF Redevelopment Incentive Program, the New Business Incentive Program, the Gallery District Program, and this new tenant relocation program, I think we're hitting a pretty wide variety of businesses and their needs.
Libby?
Another thing that we can continue to work on is creating new space downtown through projects like the Denny's Building Redevelopment and the Omen Site and other properties that we've been looking at, that we can add more choices downtown so that there are both more retail and office choices, and hopefully, we can build on that critical mass that we have on the Main Street.
Dennis?
Yeah. And I do realize that there is not probably a lot of target businesses currently, but in three or four years, they might change, and if we had this on the books, you know, the future people may appreciate it also.
Okay, anything else of this one? Want to move on to the next one?
So I guess I can't make a motion on this one at this time, because this is just a discussion period, but maybe I'll hope to talk. All right, for the, for the next discussion, I'm going to, I guess, move over to the Ozlet. No, it's not the Ozlet, it's the Elmo.
The Elmo?
Hey, I'm a promoter citizen, I wear a lot of hats. And let me think if I can do this right, if I do this. We'll see. What I'm going to do is present a concept. It's an interest of mine, partly because it's, it has to do with a building that's in the ward and a neighborhood that's in my ward. And I think, I think you know this, this topic, and you've seen, you've seen the, you've seen my emails about it, and I'm just hoping to perhaps do a little more focusing on this, but perhaps, maybe it's already up there. Oh, okay, I guess there's a little bit of activity. So I'm kind of going old-fashioned with paper here. But in my ward, as you may know, there is a section of it that I've been holding, conducting some public meetings in the last month and a half. It's a, an area in my ward that I have only approached recently to try to address some of the questions and the needs of the community in that area, and I've had two meetings at Prairie School, which have resulted in my finding out quite a lot about the needs of the community. And it is a part of the community that has a lot of issues. It includes the Scottswood Manor Apartment Building Complex, which has about, I don't know, there's about 10 units, I mean, 10 different buildings, there's quite a few units there. And the crime rate in the past has been very significant. And one of the concerns that I received information about in the discussion that I've had with that community was a long list of issues and concerns, and many of them involved the teens, they're young people, the youth in the neighborhood. Partly, parents were concerned about their safety, they were concerned that after school, there wasn't very many activities, that in the evening, they meet together and they walk around in the community. There have been a lot of instances where people complained about curfew violations. Of course, there are other issues as well, but I'm just going to like focus on that part of it. So while I was having these discussions, the, it became also a part of the knowledge of the city council that the city had come into possession of a building on the corner of Filo Road and Washington Street. And this is the TriStar Building, which had been an office building that serviced the Collins Gas Company and was involved in oil petroleum distribution in the community. And I have here on the, on the Elmo, a picture of, let's see if I can get this closer, a picture of the location of the building on the corner of Filo and Washington Street. And there's a close-up of that building on its lot from the aerial point of view. And it happens to be very, very close adjacent to this community, this neighborhood that has all these issues. And currently, it's an empty building, and the city owns it free and clear, and I'm thinking, well, what's the best use for this building, what could it be? And I know that there have been several proposals. It's been discussed earlier that perhaps Public Works could use it for additional office space, because they do need additional office space, and the Public Works Department is about a block and a half away from this building. And I know that the city has talked with the school administration in Urbana, and the school administration could possibly use it as administrative offices, which would serve the school district, but not necessarily be a public building for adult education or anything like that, it would just, it would basically handle a school administrative needs. Well, those are two valuable and considerate uses for this building, and however, I felt that there might be yet a greater use for the building. And that could be that if it were, at least, you know, perhaps part of it were incorporated into multi-use, including a community center, it would address a lot of the questions that have been raised in my, what I've learned about that neighborhood, that there is a huge concern for the activities of children and the youth and their safety, and parents are very, very vocal about it. And so could this building possibly address some of these issues? We have heard from Police Chief Billy that one of the best ways to manage a high-crime district in the city is to have very comprehensive apartment management, very efficient and well-planned, and offer programs that also educate the people in the apartment complex about what's appropriate, what's not appropriate conduct, and what's expected of them. I think hand-in-hand to that, it would be an opportunity to provide a location near that community, which is in easy walking distance, to allow for other kinds of training for young people. And this would be perhaps a place where people could come safely in the evening after school, receive tutoring and mentoring programs that are sponsored by nonprofit organizations in our community. Perhaps we could get the school district to participate in such kind of programs, involve the university community to use the site as a training facility or an internship location to offer services that are, would be appreciated by this at-risk community, and also allow training for college graduates and graduate students in the schools of social work, psychology, education. And it would enrich, it would not only allow them training and on-the-ground experiences before they go out and begin their careers, but it would also benefit the target area. I'm saying that this building, which I'm going to show now, a schematic diagram of the floor plan of the parking lot area, interestingly enough, it's, it's there, but it's almost invisible if you go by. It's not, it's a one-story building, it's not real obvious, it's on the southeast corner, it's surrounded by trees and grass, so it's, it's in a pleasant kind of position. There's ample parking. There is, in one part of the building, a large shed, which might be converted into interesting use, it might be a storage shed for sports equipment, or, you know, depending on what the condition is on the inside and whether it might be insulated, it could be a craft activity, it could be a woodworking shop, which could be accessed as a location to replace the woodworking shop that is no longer available at Urbana High School for trade education. It could also be an art studio and ceramic studio for the, for the, well, not only that neighborhood, but really, I mean, all of, all the people in Urbana. And as I'm talking about the use of this building, I'm not saying that I expect it to be limited just to a certain neighborhood. If it was a community center, it would be open to the entire city and its population. But it just happens to be located within walking distance of three elementary schools, that would be Prairie School, Wiley School, and Thomas Paine. It's on a bus route that's easily accessible, and you have to realize that the people in these communities often do not have transportation of their own, and they do rely upon public transportation to go shopping. And they often walk right past this building to do some of that shopping or to catch the bus. So the only reason that this is so significant is that the building is empty, the city already owns it, it could be, the use could be determined at no cost to the city as far as, you know, obtaining space. There would of course be some conversion of interior space perhaps to accommodate appropriate use, to yet to be determined. And you notice that the building is actually divided into two wings with a reception area in the center, and I'm going to show you now the plan, this is not very strong, this is not a very, this may be somewhat hard to see, but there is an entrance from the driveway and the parking lot into the building, and the building is divided into two wings like a V, and certainly, perhaps, in the beginning, we might want to just use one half of the building for this kind of use, and maybe the other half of the building could be used by the school district, or it could be used by city offices. And if it were to be shared in that way, it might actually give stability and help sustain the use of the building in a rather logical way, because if it was an office building during the daytime, that would provide a fair number of individuals and governance about the space around the building during the daytime. And in the evening, then, the part that was, would be more community-oriented could be opened up, and students could go there after school, and then it could close at maybe at nine o'clock at night. So I'm totally open for multiple use and having partnerships with other, other organizations within the community. So whether the city would wish to choose to initiate such a plan and incur the cost, you might call it, of creating a community center in our town, is one which I think we should discuss, and that's why I'm bringing this forward at this point. There are a number of examples of community centers which have been created in other communities, and I went on the websites of some of them, and I, I have copied for your benefit some examples of community centers in other, other areas of the United States. And I just wanted to like, to start out initially here with, in other words, what I'm going to show you is that there are many models of running a community center. And I know that the City of, City of Urbana, the city itself, may not want to be the director necessarily of a building, even though they own it, but I believe that we can find partnerships in this community where there is expertise in managing and owning, managing and running programs of benefit to young people in this community. And without, you know, without obligating any particular organization at this time, I will say that, that I and Mr. Smythe, Councilman Smythe, have approached a few such organizations in this community, and to date, we have had some very strong interest, some very sincere and strong interest about this possibility. There are organizations in this community who are actually looking for space to conduct programs, and they are, they're, they're watching this, this new development potential with a lot of interest. First, I just want to point out that we do have a really nice community center right across the street from our, our city line in Champaign, the Douglas Community Center, which has been in operation for quite a long time, it's next to Douglas Park. It serves the north of the neighborhood area of that community in Champaign, and it operates partly through the, through the help of the Champaign Park District, and it has its own procedures, it has a long history, and it's well-regarded in the community. I wanted to show you the George Washington Carver Center, and let me think, I, I left my notes on it on my desktop, but I'm trying to remember exactly where this is, and it's in Peoria, Illinois. And it's very interesting that their website says that in 1922, on Peoria South Side, "A group of women formed the colored club to save the area youth from the dangers of the streets." Okay, now, this is happening in 1922, we see the same challenges today. Seventy-five years later, the George Washington Carver Community Center continues to provide a vehicle for these people of all ages, proactive programs- Proactive programs that improve the quality of life for these individuals by teaching individual living skills, social awareness, mental and physical well-being. And one of the individuals who serves on the city council in Peoria says that this was the place that set his foot straight and got him started in public service. So, one of the quotes is, "There is a great need for a community center like Carver. Kids need a place to go and find themselves to gain self-esteem to becoming productive citizens." So, I believe that too, and I think what I'm interested in doing is seeing if the city could possibly take the courageous step to proceed and create such a center. Here is another one, which is in South Mill Street, Madison, Wisconsin. It's called The Boomerang House Community Center. "Is the oldest community center in Madison, Wisconsin, providing quality educational, recreational, and social programming and services since 1916. The Boomerang House supports thousands of Madison-Reddison residents each year through youth and senior programs, emergency food pantry, facility use, and information and referrals." And again, if you look at the second page of that passout, this happens to be an independent nonprofit organization, and you will find that some of these indeed have become, they begin to see the pants, and sometimes they end up being nonprofit organizations, which is fine. There's a lot of different models we can look at. And this community center was established in an Italian neighborhood, and part of its goal was to help individuals coming into the United States learn citizenship skills and language skills to become good citizens in America. All right. Next, I want you to put some attention here on Albany Park Community Center. And Albany Park is in, let me see if I have that. Chicago, yeah, I think you're right. It's a 4,700-block Chicago, south side of Chicago. It's also a nonprofit organization, run by a nonprofit organization. Of course, ours could be too, I suppose, even if we owned the building. And it serves the Chicago south side, and it was incorporated in 1975, fairly recently. It is a United Way Agency member. And it has a list of its mission. "The Albany Park Community Center educates and supports the members of the community as they determine their own path of growth and development by providing diverse programs and services for individuals, families, groups, and businesses." And I could go on, there's others that are similar. The Don Bosco Center, which is in Kansas City, Kansas City, Missouri, and the Brightmore Community Center, which is in Detroit, Michigan. Very interestingly, the history of the Brightmore is, as a settlement house, the center began in 1922 to provide health services to the rapidly developing low-income neighborhood just outside of the Detroit city limits. Residents petitioned to be included in the city in the 20s, and the center continues to serve low-income, multi-ethnic neighborhoods. They built, the center was built in 1958 on land cooperatively purchased by the Square Foot in 1944, and even the bricks were purchased by the residents as part of the fundraising effort. So, what I'm thinking is that even though I'm encouraging a pre-existing building be used, there are ways to enhance it, to add perhaps remodeling, remodel some of the facilities and add perhaps outdoor recreational elements to it that the community itself can sponsor and raise money for. And lastly, this is kind of like the ultimate in community centers. This is the Little Black Pearl, and this is a community center in Chicago, and it is specifically an art center. And it is a private center, and it does require a membership. But its whole purpose is to encourage creativity in youth in multicultural neighborhood of Chicago. And they have a wonderful facility that was converted, I believe, from an old factory. It's got an atrium. It has a kids' cafe on the balcony, and they have conference rooms, meeting rooms, and classrooms. So, these are just models of what other communities have done, and we don't have to be that, maybe, I don't know what our goals are. I think we have, maybe we'll talk, have a discussion about what the goals are of this community. But what I'm saying is that this building, it exists, it's available, we own it. What is its best use? Would it be better used as an administrative office, or would it be better used as a community center within walking distance of one of the most challenged areas of our community? I think that it behooved upon me to show that the community itself cared about the concept. And so, two weeks ago, I walked the neighborhood, and I want to show you that I took a petition around in the Scottswood Manor, which is the black, well, it's a multiracial apartment complex that I think a year and a half ago had 333 police calls per year. As I recall, that was the statistic I got from Police Chief Billy. And my petition reads that "We, who have signed our names below, support the idea of using the Tri-Star Building at 1301 East Washington Street in Urbana, on the southeast corner of Philo Road and East Washington Street, as an area community center serving the residents of Urbana, especially those in the South Hurmond and East Washington neighborhoods. The goal of creating the center will be to offer youth activities, mentoring, homework support, adult education opportunities, job training services, and access to modern communication technologies in a safe, friendly environment, which is easily accessible to the target area community." That's at least my vision. I want you to know that in three hours, I got 105 signatures. Some of the people I went to their door, and the parents were very reticent about signing things, but the children, who were watching television, were listening. They jumped up off the couch and said, "I want to sign." And I'm talking about 14-year-old and 15-year-old kids who live in this community. I talked to one gentleman who said that he was a member of a seven-person black dance club. They had no place to practice except his living room, which measured about seven feet by 10 feet. That's where they met and practiced. So, he said, "Man, I would love to have something like this where I could go, our group could go and practice dance." And I also met a few people whose family members were ministers in the black community, and they both said that they were extremely interested that such an initiative would be starting up in Urbana, and would like to do anything that they could to assist. So, at this point, I don't really expect to have, I don't have a detailed plan of what I expect, how to structure this program. Really, I'm at a fact-finding state right now, and I wish to invite the community at large to help me learn more about what is possible in such a facility, if we chose to follow through on it, and to give me feedback and input. And so, to that point, I am interested in holding an input session. And I've scheduled a meeting for November 30th, which is the fifth Monday of the month. It's a time that the city council is not meeting, so this room is available. And I've scheduled a meeting in here at 7:00 in the evening, from 7:00 to 9:00. And I am looking for public input to find out whether this is a feasible site, if there is community members who are interested in this project, are there community groups who would wish to run programs if such a center was open? Are there people who would like to donate financially to the creation or sustain such a center? Because I expect that one of the obligations in creating this center would be not only making it sustainable, but we would probably have to come up with the salary of a director for the center, and maybe one or two assistants to organize and coordinate the programming. Now, I know that we do have, we do cover grant, through our grants, general grant funds, on an annual basis, we fund the needs of many nonprofit organizations whose services benefit the residents of our community. You know, Don Morris Boys Club, we have mentoring programs from Parkland College, we have reading assistance skill people, and we have people who run summer camps. It's possible that through that kind of funding, if one of these organizations came forward and had a strong and reliable program of operating such a center, should it exist, they may want to propose a management team to take over the responsibility of doing such a thing. I don't know. I'm just saying that there are possible ways of solving that aspect of it. And we also know that the new broadband initiative that's been going through stages right now, and the city of Champaign-Urbana is participating and making grant applications to create on-the-ground broadband accessibility throughout our community, does allow for the creation and the focus of various locations in the community to become training centers. And if they were to be indicated as such, then they would receive funds from that grant to create not only training opportunities, but probably to provide materials that would make, well, internet accessibility and broadband use available at such a building. So, I feel like I've talked a lot, but I think I've made my case clear. Whether this proceeds or not, I know that there are other needs perhaps that the city council will like to discuss as far as use of the building, but I thank you very much for listening to me at this point.
Okay, thank you. I think Heather, you're first.
Um, I'm involved in the construction of the Blue Man Club. So, I'm working on the, I wonder if I'm available to be, I feel like I'm still a holder, if you will, considered when considering this location as a center for youth activity. While I think it's a great thoughtful idea, I think those things also have to be considered. I don't mind the issues, and then have properly directed this property that is accessible and also sound useful to the Boomerangs, which is an alcohol service. So, I think it's a useful facility. We have to also take all those things into consideration.
Okay, should I, could I answer that?
Sure.
Okay. Well, the Boomerang Club, I visited it, and it's just a grill, yes, alcohol is served there. However, alcohol is also served and sold at a packaged liquor store on the corner, and there is a bar nearby, yes. The building is separated by parking lot, by then rear parking lot of the Silver Bullet Club, and the entrances to both of those establishments are on the opposite side of the building from the location of this building. There's 240 feet distance between the buildings, and currently, those buildings, those clubs are in total operation in any case, and those kids live right next to them in any case. And so, I don't see that there would be any change in the threat to those children by them walking not only just to the store, to the dollar store nearby, or to the home-run market that doesn't exist already. And if they indeed had a place to go that was a safe, secured, well-lit, and well-managed location to do their homework, I think that actually would be a benefit to the community and not a detriment. And I think that if you talk to the mothers whose children are in that community, their concern is more about having better-lit streets than about, you know, people coming and going to the club. But it's a worthy thing to look into, and I believe, though, that there is no additional threat. Perhaps actually, there might be a solution in creating a social, a community service facility here at this location.
Actually, my concern was the people who might be going to the Silver Bullet and to the Boomerang if there is a facility there with youth in it. When I'm reading here with the alcohol and the pedophiles, those being issues, if then we have a youth center, and especially when it comes to the pedophile issue, when they're leaving there, and then, you know, say, people go to the Silver Bullet, and they know that the youth center closes at 9:00, and they're walking back to their homes, that's where, what I'm saying is not necessarily the divisions and parking lots and all that. What I'm looking at and foreseeing as a detriment, and like I said, I think this is a great idea in theory, other things have to be really thoughtfully considered, and that is, say, a man goes in who's a registered sex offender, goes into the Silver Bullet, he knows the youth center closes at 9:00, and a 12-year-old girl is walking past the Silver Bullet back to her house, that's just, you know, would rise concern for me. And I think that it would maybe for other parents, too.
Well, that's valid, and of course, what I've heard is that they're concerned about that in any case, because the children are, you know, a lot of those children are not obeying curfew, and they're walking around at 10:00 at night already. And, you know, it's unsupervised, it's just, you know, people are just walking in the streets randomly, and sometimes actually, you know, creating problems for the residents who are driving up and down to get to their driveways in their homes. So, I mean, one of the reasons why one would want to create a place that is a safe haven for children and youth would be partly to address that very issue. Now, there are other police activities that can be engaged in that might also address that issue, and then there's a question of street lighting. Except, the problem is that in Scottswood Manor, it's private streets. So, the city would have to come up with a program, and maybe this could be a, what's it, a community development block grant solution to provide certain kind of street lighting around the perimeter of the apartment buildings. I mean, the Safety Task Force could probably suggest solutions that would assist in the solution of this problem. And I don't think it's a significant enough concern to necessarily say that having, establishing a community center for the community as a whole couldn't go forward without thoughtful thinking about how to solve that. I wouldn't want to just say, "Well, jeez, that's true, let's not do it."
And that's not what I was saying either.
And I appreciate that.
I'm saying that's an issue. I think it needs to be concerned, considered.
I think we should air all the issues.
And then it's that, you have one here, "How can we hold parents accountable for teen activities, get them involved in their teens' lives, and if we're going to have a community center, have the parents, you know, maybe take turns, maybe there's a mom who's a great baker, have her lead girls in a class on how to bake a cake or something like that, and getting parents involved and making them feel important and placing value in their kids' lives, I think, would be one way of having parents involved in the youth, youth center and the activity of their teens."
That's very valuable. I think you're right that adult involvement is a key to the prosperity of the child.
Yeah, Dennis, thanks for bringing this forward. This is a great concept, and some of the examples of community centers in other towns are really inspiring. I'm sure, you know, we have the capacity and the know-how somewhere in this community to make good things like this happen. To me, I think there's three key pieces of the puzzle, or three legs to the stool, that all would have to come together, and maybe in this order, as you, Dennis, go about putting these pieces together. First is programming, that obviously, one of the key questions is finding the programming, the people who have know-how to put on youth programming. And the partnerships that you mentioned, I think, are the best ways to do that. The people at the Boys and Girls Club... The, the people at the Boys and Girls Club, I would also mention the community center in the old Harley Davidson store, where I believe it's Janice Mitchell is doing something there. I haven't visited yet, but there was a News Gazette article about it maybe a month ago. So, those people who know how to do youth programming already, I think, are our best partners, because the city is not itself directly in that, in that business. We don't have that expertise directly without partnering with people. Then after you solve that leg of the stool, to me, the next question we'd have to solve is sustainable funding, that I think you'd want a sustainable funding model so you knew it would go on some number of years, and that, you know, just a grant or something that might run out really immediately would be too scary to start a big effort and then see it go away. So some sustainable funding model, and I don't know whether the city's in a position now where it could pay for, you know, you mentioned like three staff members or not. I know we're facing these more-than-million-dollar deficits in this fiscal year and the next, but, but somehow, you've mentioned grants, you've mentioned a lot of other partners. There, I'm sure are solutions to the funding piece. And then I think, once you knew the programming and the funding, finalizing the facility decision is something you could do, because it might be, like, say you partner with Boys and Girls Club, who knows how to do youth programming? If they're chosen as the partner, they might say, "Well, we need a gymnasium," or "We need a commercial kitchen," you know, "to keep all our food or something." They might have real requests on the facility that might mean that this particular facility isn't good, but that the addition to Prairie School, where they're talking about adding a multipurpose kind of room, would be perfect and could be expanded into this vision. So I think you kind of have to choose the facility once you know the programming and the, the needs for square footage, or gymnasiums, or those particular things to serve youth And I think it's reasonable for the city to consider this building for it if the programming and the sustainable funding pieces fit, and the partners would want this building. It's, it's a great thing we could do by helping to make this building part of a community center. I think if those pieces of the puzzle don't come together in another six months, the city can't probably hold out much longer. I mean, we couldn't keep the, the building vacant for, for years. We'd have to see something happening and see some of these pieces starting to come together before, I think, the city would need to just move forward on putting some people there, because we have such a space issue as does the school district, and other potential projects, like how this fits into the boneyard if they might relocate some of the school staff. So I feel like six months is a reasonable timeline for us to say, "Okay, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to ourselves move in and take over the building quite yet. Let's give this idea time for the puzzle pieces to come together, programming, funding, and, and then facility." And, and I think with those three pieces, you've got it. You've got, you know, those are the keys to a great center like this. Some of these models are really wonderful, and it would definitely serve the neighborhood. And I, I think finding those community partners who have expertise and having a public meeting is a great step to see where the interest and the connections might come. So, that's my, my suggestion, is the one, two, three-step process, and, and I appreciate your, your input on all of this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Robert Lewis.
Well, thank you, Dennis, for your, your input on what you can do with a community center. I think it's, with the demographic, demographic change in our city, your area is a little different than the one I serve right now, and a lot of children are in your area, and I know that in discussions with Janice Mitchell and setting up her program, I've worked with her for years on doing those kinds of things. And I think, Mr. Bowersox, those elements of the three-legged thing can come together really quickly. The funding issue is, is interesting in that everybody's scrapping for monies right now, but in terms of grants availability, there's a lot of it out there, if you know how to search for it. I don't think it would be that difficult to put together, and I think you've got enough people in that community that will back what you're supporting, try and do. I think the, the meeting you're going to have in November, the end of November, will probably put a, a lot of input into what potentially can be. So, I wait to see that come together. I think that'll be great.
Diane?
Thank you, Dennis, for your vision and all the work you've put into this. I agree with pretty much everything that's been said so far. I did attend the first of the two neighborhood meetings that Dennis hosted and heard much of, many of the comments that are listed on the paper, and the need in that area is huge. I mean, you know, the neighbors were describing kids as young as eight or nine years old being out after midnight, one or two in the morning, just wandering the streets. I mean, there's a lot of desperate need in, in that neighborhood, and so, an investment like this, or a commitment like this to the youth of Urbana, I think is, is what, is something very desirable, and not just in that area east of Phila Road, but also south along Phila Road down toward southeast, south and east Urbana as well. So, I, and the council toured the TriStar Building about six weeks ago, so we all are pretty familiar with the facility. It's huge. There's, there's more than enough space for a community center and multiple other uses if that's the way we decide to go. But again, we do need to decide the, the, what facility would best serve the need, and this is certainly a possibility. But at any rate, I just wanted to say I will work with you to make this a reality.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Dennis? Let's move on. We have one other item, and that's an appointment, I'm asking for Building Safety Code Board of Appeals that Scott Kunkel be appointed for a five-year term ending June 30th, 2014.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Bowersox, seconded by Lewis.
Quick, quick question, Mayor.
Mr. Smythe.
So this doesn't require a citizen, that the person be a resident of Urbana, though?
Well, I hope not.
It doesn't.
It doesn't. He was recruited for his expertise.
Okay, this is one of those specialty.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Thank you very much. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.